Good evening. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Arlington Select Board on Monday, November 10, 2025, which is being conducted in the Select Board chambers and over Zoom and is being recorded and simultaneously broadcast on ACMI. I am Chair Diane Mahan, and joining me here tonight, beginning with Board members are...
Eric Helmut.
Jane Morgan.
Steve DeCoursey.
James Feeney, Town Manager.
Michael Cunningham, Town Council.
Ashley Marwood.
Thank you. If I could invite up the Executive Director, Patrick Heron, from the Mystic River Watershed, and the Chairperson of Save the Alwife, Kristen Anderson. Mr. Helmut, before we begin, I'd like to call on you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to recuse myself owing to my daytime appointment by the Massachusetts Senate. The letter under question copies the legislature, so the Ethics Commission requires me to recuse for this item, but I will be back for the second item.
Thank you. And, oh, I should note that Mr. Hurd is still at his day job and will be joining us, but probably not till about 8:00 to 8:30-ish. The first and second agenda item, the Board is definitely really up to speed on all things CSO. After the legislative meeting that was held, I believe, on Halloween that Mr. Heron and Ms. Anderson and others were at, in the group assembled of legislators, Cambridge, Somerville, as well as state reps, senators, and their office staff, Chief of Staff, et cetera, it was first unveiled, the MWRA, Fred Lasky's plan, I believe, from the day before, from their wastewater management subcommittee about exploring, downgrading the water body status of the Alwife Brook, Charles River, which was a surprise to everyone, except for David Shoff, who's been saying that for about two, three years, and I thought he was just being extra pragmatic, but he said that's probably what would happen. And after that, I had a meeting the next Monday, Tuesday, with the Town Manager, bring him up to speed, who indicated he would be meeting with the Executive Director of the Mystic River Watershed. And as a result, we have the two agenda items here tonight, and I'm not going to go on any further, but before I turn it over, Mr. Feeney, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank especially Mr. Heron for preparing some draft letters for the Board to consider this evening and its continued advocacy to sort of do right by Arlington's residents with respect to achieving as much control as possible with the CSOs that are impacting the Alwife Brook.
Thank you. And normally, I would say, where we have two agenda items that are pretty much tied to each other hand in hand, we could mix the two, but in light of the fact that Mr. Helmut can join us for the second topic, it might take a little bit longer, but if we could address them each separately. So what I'd like to do is go to Agenda Item One, Discussion and Vote, from Patrick Heron, the Executive Director of the Mystic River Watershed.
Great. Thank you so much to the Select Board for having me this evening and for considering these two items, particularly this first one. Next week, the MWRA Board will vote to submit a draft plan to the EPA and the DEP. That draft plan considers control of CSOs, a set of work to achieve that over the next 20 years for both the Charles River, Alwife Brook, and the Mystic River. The plan being submitted, in particular for Alwife Brook, is less than ambitious and doesn't meet the needs of our community to protect public health and property and create a healthy and vibrant community. Our own organization comes in front of you today to both inform and make you aware, and it sounds like there is a great awareness already, of this plan that's being submitted, but also to consider how that plan impacts residents in Arlington. This plan does not achieve a level of control of CSOs in the future that we can be assured will reduce the volumes and exposures to people who both live or recreate in the area. The reason for that is that as climate change comes into effect, as it is now, and we see increasing precipitation, the plan that they submit will make modest progress in addressing CSOs, but will easily be overwhelmed by other storms. And so we believe that it's in the interest of Town of Arlington to submit a letter to the MWRA Board ahead of this meeting to indicate that you want to see greater control than is being promised in this draft report that's being submitted.
Thank you. And Ms. Anderson, I know you started on this since you were a resident of Sunnyside, East Arlington neighborhood committee, but now still an Arlington resident, Save the Alwife Brook and others. If you could just add any comments either to the plan or the cost or anything else.
Sure. And I just want to start by thanking the Select Board and the Town Manager and Town Council, especially Chair Mahan, for working so hard and for so long on trying to see an end to sewage pollution at Alwife Brook. And I also want to thank the Mystic River Watershed Association for all the amazing work that it does to improve conditions. Patrick Heron, Director Patrick Heron, is a hero. The Mystic River Watershed Association, Charles River Watershed Association, and Save the Alwife Brook have been working for four years on trying to see improvements in the planning at Alwife Brook and at the Mystic and Charles Rivers. By December 31, 2025, at the end of this year, MWRA, Somerville, and Cambridge will submit their sewage pollution plans to MAST DEP and EPA. The plans to reduce or eliminate sewage are what MAST DEP refers to as the centerpiece of their water quality variance. There is a regulatory requirement that MWRA, Cambridge, and Somerville make improvements to water quality. We have done so much work in the last four years. Select Board, Town Council, the Town Manager have been very supportive. Chair Mahan even came out in the pouring rain during one of our cleanup events for Earth Day, and you have been to every single one of our meetings. During the last four years, we all believed that MWRA, Somerville, and Cambridge were working in good faith towards solutions. Unfortunately, we have come to find that MWRA favors doing nothing to make improvements because they don't want to spend any money. The way they achieve this is through lowering the water quality standard. MWRA submitted 12 different unworkable plans for Alwife Brook that, one by one, were meant to be rejected. We saw a plan that included a stormwater wetlands in Davis Square where 40 private residential buildings would need to be removed during a housing crisis. Another proposal claimed that MWRA would have to do sewer separation outside of the Alwife Brook watershed in order to address CSOs at Alwife Brook. One proposal from MWRA overestimated the cost of sewer separation per acre by four times. MWRA stated that it would cost nearly $2 million per acre, while just a year ago, MWRA's Dave Kopus wrote in a letter to MAST DEP that sewer separation would cost $510,000 per acre. The entire point of these different proposals that we have seen from MWRA is to say, it's too complicated, it's too expensive, nothing can be done. The MWRA wants the state to lower the water quality standard to allow endless increasing amounts of sewage pollution. MWRA would rather get out of making improvements by lowering the water quality standard. Lowering the water quality standard in the Alwife Mystic and Charles Rivers allows MWRA to bypass state requirements to make improvements. Rather than providing needed funding for improvements through the Long-Term Sewer Control Plan that we are now four years into the planning of, our rivers would be used as sewer infrastructure, running through neighborhoods and flooding onto public pathways and into basements. This is not what the public wants, this is not what Cambridge City Council wants, and it's not what Governor Healy wants. The Governor's Biodiversity Conservation Goals for the Commonwealth Report, published in August of 2025, specifically calls on the state, including the MWRA and EEA Secretary, to quote "significantly reduce or eliminate combined sewer overflows," CSOs. The current proposal does not come close to eliminating these CSOs in Boston Rivers. Instead, it proposes dumping considerably more sewage into our water bodies on an annual basis. Lowering the water quality standard could mean four times as much raw sewage dumped into Alwife Brook by 2050, and this is a public health problem. Last year, in 2024, Boston University School of Public Health published a study that found a link between CSOs and acute digestive illness thought to possibly be related to aerosolized bacterial particulate. 100% of the sewage at Alwife Brook is untreated. In 2021, 51 million gallons of sewage was dumped in the Brook. 2023, 29 million gallons. That same year, in 2023, the Brook overflowed its bank five times, sending untreated sewage floodwater into the Alwife Greenway. We saw children riding bikes through untreated sewage floodwater, joggers running through it, and parents pushing baby strollers through untreated sewage floodwater. This is a densely populated area with 5,000 people living in the 100-year floodplain at Alwife Brook. The Brook floods regularly. It's a horrific situation, it's an environmental justice situation as well, and what we have at Alwife Brook is a public health crisis. It is time that Alwife Brook is brought into the 21st century. MWRA must complete the job it started 40 years ago. Thank you.
So I will now turn to my colleagues, the letter to the EEA, EAE, Secretary Tepper, MWRA Board, and CC's, the Governor on down. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Heron, Ms. Anderson, for your continued advocacy and for the letter. I just want to clarify a couple of things for the letter. I know at the presentation on October 29, you'd mentioned the alternatives, and you mentioned there was 12 alternatives presented, and the so-called AB Hybrid 2, is that the one that was ultimately recommended?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. And of that, I, in reading the letter, and it sounds like there's only about a week before they make it, they have their next meeting, is that right?
The deadline for submitting materials to the Board is this Thursday, and then the meeting's next Wednesday.
Okay. Because I think, you know, it certainly makes sense for the, for us to send something. I'd like to maybe put a little bit more detail, even in the letter, just to identify, we're aware of what the alternative was and what alternatives may be better, but I feel like it's missing a couple of things in terms of that context, and I know there's a request to have the highest level, but I'm just curious, as you've looked at it, and we haven't talked before the meeting, I apologize for that, but of the 12, are there only two that are better, is only, what alternative do you see here, or are none of the alternatives here acceptable in your view?
We've been advocating for a 25-year level of control. That means that the amount of storage in the system or separation would mean that there would be no CSOs until we got to the type of storm that only comes once every 25 years. So for, there's a, there's a number of ways they can solve that problem. They have presented a few plans, but it's the scale of the solutions. Frequently, they're using the same tools across all of these plans, but it's the scale of those solutions that they apply in each one.
Okay. And are any of these, I'm just thinking, in terms of what our request is, and obviously, you know, we'd like the highest level of control at some point, but in the short term, we'd like better control and, you know, a higher investment. I'm just wondering if there's anything that we could identify here in addition to that request number one in the letter that we could put in to provide a little bit more context?
I might, I might like to say that we've been studying the sewer systems in Cambridge and in Somerville, specifically in the Alwife watershed, and there are about 188 acres of sewer separation left in Cambridge, in Somerville, and there's room for another stormwater wetland in, on DCR property, and there's even a plan in the MDC's 2003 Alwife Master Plan to add a second large stormwater wetland to receive those, that those stormwater flows. And in Somerville, there is a 2022 Dewberry, that's the name of their consultant firm, plan, an 89-page engineering document which would allow for the elimination of the, of Somerville's CSO at Alwife Brook. I look at their plans, and I don't want to speak for Mystic River Watershed Association, but I look at their plans, and I just think, they got to go back to the drawing board. We need sewer separation, we need green stormwater infrastructure, and we need, we need to get rid of some of these outfalls. There's not a single, they haven't eliminated a single outfall in this, in any of the proposals. In the first Long-Term Control Plan, they removed seven outfalls. They haven't, they're not closing a single one in these plans, and we think they could close five out of six with storage, 25-year level of storage. And they're, that's not the only plan. I mean, there are, I'm sure that they can come up with other plans as well. It just seems like they, their goal was to get to this point where they were going to say, we don't want to do anything.
And to your question, they submitted 47 plans for the three water bodies. For Alwife, it was 12 to 14 plans. They put it, in my, and up until the very last meeting, over the course of four years, there's been nothing in terms of any concrete plans. It's like, we're listening sessions, we hear public health, we hear this, we hear that. And then they came out with all these plans for the Alwife, Hybrid 2, 2A, 2B, and they put, in my opinion, ridiculous costs assigned to them. To me, they're really not valid plans, and they put an asterisk next to each one saying, and even when they were trying to present these plans, they kind of couldn't stop even smiling themselves to say, of course, I have to say these costs are subject to change. I mean, they were submitting plans saying they would cost 1.2 billion, 2.4 billion. I mean, nobody's, you know, so to say which of the plans that they submitted, granted they only submitted them at the very last meeting, the four years of going to these meetings, and there isn't one, first of all, you can't take what the cost estimate is because even they say the cost is wrong. In my opinion, they just did it everything times four to make it look so cost prohibitive. But I don't know, did you have anything you wanted to add, Mr. Feeney? Sorry.
Yeah, I think, though I'm certainly not expert on these matters, but having reviewed some of the plans that were proposed with our Director of Public Works, as I understand, I believe there were 12 alternatives proposed for CSO control in the Alwife Brook. I think approximately eight of them achieved the same level of control that would be termed for a typical year, and the hybrid AB 2 that was chosen or proposed fit into that first category, but there are two other additional categories that achieve a higher level of control, and I think there were two alternatives in each. So I think to Mr. DeCoursey's earlier point, if we wish to achieve a higher degree of specificity of what we're asking the MWRA Board to do, and while I understand there may be other plans that they should have considered, they're likely to choose from the alternatives in their report that they modeled, I think there would be potentially four alternatives that could be spelled out. I believe two of them achieve CSO control for a five-year event, and I believe two of them control CSO outfalls to a 25-year event, as Mr. Heron alluded to. So I think there's potentially four alternatives for the Board to consider, encouraging the MWRA's executive board to consider for their regulatory submission in December.
Don't take the costs they have assigned to it, because even they put an asterisk saying.
But that's very, if I may, yeah, no, that's very helpful, Mr. Feeney. So I look at this, and given the time constraints, I just get concerned when there's a request to commit to the highest level that's, and it's not defined in the letter, and I'd be more comfortable, you know, that obviously is the goal, but maybe to identify some of these other alternatives. So in the interest of time, and we can still discuss this, I'll make a motion that we authorize the Chair to send a letter on Thursday. I'd be willing to work with the Chair and Town Manager, maybe to make some edits, because I, the word highest concerns me without a little bit more context, and a couple of other things here and there in the letter that I probably would change without taking out the necessity for further direction and further action. So it's a long-worded motion, but that's, that's, I think balances our, the interest of time in getting something out before the next meeting.
I am so pleased to hear you say that, because we've done this on the Mugar issue, and we've come up with letters and suggestions, and then because of his day job and his historical knowledge and information, Mr. DeCoursey has made the submission so much more better in terms of including proper details. So that's, I'm happy to take that motion and work with you, and as long as we get it to you by Thursday afternoon or Thursday morning.
I think it's Thursday by the end of the day, and...
We'll try to do it earlier.
We can provide the contact information, so you can send it directly.
Okay. Mrs. Morgan?
Nope, nothing to add, thank you. I'm happy to second Mr. DeCoursey's motion, though.
And then I'll check with Town Council that after Mr. DeCoursey and I meet with the manager and/or whomever else, come up with the letter with additional details, which we're approving here tonight, that after we do that, either through the Board Administrator, Town Council, or Town Manager, we can then disseminate that to the rest of the Board so they can see that, although, Mr. Helmut, I'm not sure, we'll see how that goes.
That's correct, Madam Chair.
Okay. All right, under motion by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Morgan, any further questions and comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Could you get, oh, there we go. We now go to Agenda Item Two again, ask our Executive Director of the Mystic River Watershed, Patrick Heron, to remain there, as well as the founding member and Chair, Mrs. Anderson, to stay there, just in case, don't want to have to have you go back and forth. And if there's a little repetition, that's fine, because Mr. Helmut is now able to join us.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I should say, I was able to follow the proceedings online over cable, so I heard the discussion.
Thank you. We now have Agenda Item Two, Discussion and Vote, Boston Harbor Cleanup Support Letter. Mr. Heron?
Way back in the early 80s, there was a case to clean up Boston Harbor. That cleanup case was really about building new capacity to both convey and treat our sanitary waste. It resulted in the construction of Deer Island. It included a lot of work to address combined sewer overflows in Boston Harbor, and some here in the Alwife Brook, the Mystic River, and the Charles River. That case and that work have been really ambitious over the years. The MWRA, along in partnership with a number of our municipalities, have completed nearly $5 billion of work, and the results in Boston Harbor are really striking. Everybody notes that we have a harbor that is welcoming, it's clean, tourism has been boosted, property values have gone through the roof. And during that same period of time, while progress has been made to dramatically reduce CSOs in some areas, in places like Alwife Brook, we still are impacted by really high loads of CSOs. That cleanup case that was in federal court is what has resulted in a period, a number of variances through the period of time to allow the parties, including the MWRA, to undertake work during, in five-year increments. That case was supposed to be done by now. There were a set of goals described in what's called the Long-Term Control Plan of a set of projects to be completed, and along with that was a set of metrics that they had to meet for performance in the typical year. And what that meant is in a set of design storms, those combined sewers would overflow only below a certain volume or a certain number of times a year. Unfortunately, at the end of all of that work, a number of those outfalls continued to discharge at rates higher than was allowed in that plan. As a result, that federal case is ongoing, as the MWRA is in discussions with the other parties in the case to describe how to close out that case despite the fact that they didn't meet the goals, including in Alwife Brook. As those conversations are going on, we are beginning the plan for the next 20- or 30-year Long-Term Control Plan, that plan that we just discussed a few moments ago that we think should seek a higher level of control. Right now, in that federal case, are the, is the Massachusetts Water Resources Authority, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, and the nonprofit Conservation Law Foundation. Based on dialogue and following the court proceedings, we believe that we would be better served to intervene in the case, to be able to participate in discussions and potential settlement and closing out that case, to make sure that the Alwife Brook, the residents, and the properties in the area are best represented. At the moment, as we're having dialogue with these parties outside of that case, we are seeing very little window into that case, and we're seeing very little movement toward the settlement that would benefit the area that's been impacted by combined sewer overflows that continue to discharge at a rate higher than was allowed in the case. I come to you today with a letter, a draft letter for the Town of Arlington, to consider giving support to our case as an environmental nonprofit, to get involved in that case, so that we can sit in on negotiations with an attorney and seek the best outcomes for Alwife Brook. We're an organization that was founded in 1972, it's located here in Arlington, and we have worked hard on stewardship and water quality throughout these years. We believe we would represent the interests of Arlington well in that case, but of course, we're not representing you, we're representing the whole of Alwife Brook and the Mystic River. Instead, we're just asking for your support for our involvement in that case.
Mr. Feeney, do you have any comments?
No, the only thing I would add, Madam Chair, is, as Mr. Heron just alluded to at the end of his remarks, that, you know, this is not necessarily seeking to have the Town of Arlington intervene as a party in any way or become a party to any suit, it was solely to lend our support to the Mystic River Watershed Association as an organization to represent Arlington's interests, and I suspect that there may be a similar ask of other communities within the watershed to do the same.
Thank you. Mr. DeCoursey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Heron. Has the motion to intervene already been filed?
No, it is not.
Okay. So just with that, I mean, I, before we discuss a letter of support for a motion to intervene, I'd like to actually see the motion, and maybe on that basis, well, I'll continue, I'm going to make a motion to table this discussion till that happens, because I feel it's premature for us to comment on a motion that hasn't, hasn't been filed yet. I will say that in this litigation, you mentioned the age of it, back in, I believe it has a 1988 docket number, that's when it was initially filed, and in 1989, Cohasset, Sitewatt, and Hall had motions to intervene denied because they weren't timely. And so that's a big concern for me, if there was timeliness issues in 1989, I know the issues changed, but that's a big hurdle you're going to have to overcome in your, in your motion, and I, I think it really behooves us to look at that first and then comment on it. And I will say, it does concern me writing, for us to write a letter of support to a, to a judge as well, but I mean, I think, I think we take one step at a time and ask for you to complete your motion, and then we would have something to consider. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. DeCoursey. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll second that motion. I think that I am broadly supportive of the mission and of the goals, and I think, like Mr. DeCoursey, I think it would be wise for us to see the, the motion as filed before we could really even have a lot of discussion, from my view, about, you know, about commenting on that, including in this forum, I think, from my point of view. Thank you.
And Mr. Feeney or Town Council, Cunningham, would it be appropriate, we are going to table this, that should we ask Mr. Heron to send the filing to the Board, send it to Town Council, to Town Manager, or a combination thereof, so then when it is appropriate to be back on the agenda? What's the best way to handle that? Attorney Cunningham? Attorney Cunningham?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd be happy to receive it, and then forward it along to the board for its consideration. I did take a look at the docket, so I was just seeing if I could, if it had been filed, whether I could find it and locate it for the board, but I was unable to, I guess. Let's explain why. But yeah, I'd be happy to do that. If you want to send it along, I'd be, I can forward it along to the members.
Mr. Feeney?
I think, Madam Chair, if through you, we could ask Executive Director Herron about what the timeline for this may be, in terms of when, you know, knowing when the board's next meeting is, and just trying to understand what the timeline or deadline may be for such a submission would be helpful, as we map a, chart a course forward.
Do you have a timeline in mind, or?
Well, we are on a public record right here, and this is, you tend not to communicate about filings like this, so that the other parties, but I will say that very soon, days, not weeks, is what I want to say.
Well, our next meeting is December 8th. We do have a meeting on December 22nd, but that's going to be a very abbreviated letter. And to have a conversation, it would probably be a December 8th meeting for that. So just to keep that in mind, I'm not asking you to, just so you know, our timeline.
I think we would be prepared by December 8th.
Mr. DeCoursey, is that amendable?
Yes.
So, Mr. DeCoursey's motion to table, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, with the understanding that town council and the executive director of Mystic River Watershed will correspond. And I won't set a definitive December 8th agenda item, but if we could put sort of a placeholder, just in case. Any further questions or comments? If not, under motion by Mr. DeCoursey, seconded by Mr. Helmuth, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for joining us. We will now go to agenda item three, discussion and vote, property tax classification tax rate. We have the Chair of the Board of Assessors, once again, Mary Winstanley O'Connor, to start us off.
Dana.
And, good evening, Madam Chairwoman, members of the board, Mr. Town Manager. I am Mary Winstanley O'Connor, the Chairwoman of the Board of Assessors. With me tonight is Gordon Jamison and William Zagata, my fellow members on the board, and of course, you know, the Director, Dana Mann. Also tonight, we have Mitch Suarez, who's the, a data collector in the office, who's come here to watch the proceeding, so we'll put on a good show for him. And I just want to say, on behalf of the people that work in this office, there are only four employees that work in the Board of Assessors' office, Jennifer O'Rourke and Mary McMakin, as well as these two gentlemen. And that is a very small staff for a very large and important role in this community. So we like to thank them for their hard work, and they run it, it runs like clockwork. We're here tonight for the classification hearing. You have the packets that Mr. Mann put together for you. He will go over it. We do not make a recommendation as to classification, no classification, that's your role, and he will give you the data. He's not going to get so far into the weeds unless you want him to. He's just going to, like we did last week. So he's just going to review how he gets to his numbers. So Dana, if you would.
Sure. Thank you, Mary. Appreciate the kind words. Thank you. If we can go to slide two. Dana Mann, Director of Assessments, and thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate it. Here we have the makeup of the tax rate. You've seen this, I'm sure. We start with the previous year levy limit, and we add to that the Proposition Two and a Half, the two and a half percent. We also add to that new growth. And I just want to clarify, there's an asterisk here. This number is now certified by the DOR, so these, that number and the total value numbers are baked in, are certified. So that gives us a new levy limit at fiscal year '26. The, that number is then, in addition to the excluded school debt. And that gives us a maximum total to be raised for fiscal year '26 of $171,456,012. And when we account for the effect of the senior means tested exemption and the reduction in residential value, we divide that number, the $16 billion number, into the $171 million dollar amount to be raised, and we get the tax rate of $10.67. And as I go along, please, any questions, please feel free to stop me, I'm going to go through this a little more rapidly.
Dana is not going to go through all the calculations. You people have all seen these before. If you have questions, he's more than happy to answer them.
Page three, or two, I think it is. Page two, the next page. This simply discusses the abatements and the amount of growth by class. So we can see where that growth is coming from, and we can see where abatements went Page four, it is commonly referred to as the LA4. This is values by class. And Diane, I, we put in an index here, so that we don't have to get into the state use codes. I hope that's clear.
Yes, for my share. Thank you.
The next page, page four, is a comparison between the fiscal year '26 numbers and the fiscal year '25 numbers. It'll show you increases in value, decreases in value, and parcel counts. Page five, we have the components of the tax rate. So what, what the cost was in determining the levy that determined the tax rate. Page six, we have a storied list, listing of tax rates. And page seven, we have a comparison of certain numbers, values, comparing, comparing our numbers to our peer communities, I think I'd say.
And it's worth pointing out that the tax rate in Arlington is lower than the other communities that we use, Belmont, Winchester, and Lexington.
It is early, we have not had a chance to collect.
Well, let me, let me say this, they have been historically lower, and we expect them to be as well. Go ahead.
We will update this report. It's online on the assessors' website, with the fiscal year '26 numbers for Lexington and Belmont.
And before you turn from that page, just if you could, we have the materials before us, but if you could just, for you or Mrs. Winstanley O'Connor, just for the year 2025, if you could just say out loud what the average taxes for the single-family homes for Arlington, Belmont, Winchester, Lexington are?
Well, the, the average tax rate for 2025 is $10.77 in Arlington. In Belmont, it was $11.39. Winchester, it was $11.09. In Lexington, it was $12.23. So you can see that the Arlington tax rate is lower, and candidly, I think Arlington provides better services than some of these other, maybe I'm prejudiced, but than these other services, snow removal, trash removal and things. Arlington does a much better job. So I think we come in at a very reasonable tax rate. The town is well-run by you people and the town manager.
Thank you. And all the other graphs and numbers will be on the website, but just to give people a sense of what it is we're looking at.
The value.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, 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 that's a good point, Mrs. Mahan.
Okay, continuing on.
So page eight. Page eight displays the percent share of the levy by the major classes. Now, these are, these are value, not, not numbers or what have you. We're comparing the value of each class here.
But the important number, probably, that your board would like to see, is that the commercial, industrial, and personal property of the, of the total constitutes
The next page, nine, determines the maximum amount that the town could shift, if it were to consider shifting the tax rate. In other words, changing the, the amount each class is responsible for in the levy. So these numbers tell us that the town can only shift to a maximum of 150%. Page 10 gives us the numbers, and this, this tends to make it more clear. If we look at what they are calling numeral four, the 5.2121 number, that is the current CIP share, commercial, industrial, and personal property share of the '26 levy, without any, any shift. The maximum share for the CIP at 150% shift would be 7.8182%. Page 11 is a sort of what-if scenario. We've calculated what would happen to the tax rate for both the residential class and the CIP. So you see the, the tax rates vary in both cases. And in the right-hand column, we've determined what that tax result would be. And that is by per $500,000 of value. And the last page, page 12, we look at some scenarios around the residential exemption option. And I think we've seen this quite a bit. We know that this exemption is available in, I think it's now up to 22 communities. And it's traditionally larger cities that have a higher or a lower owner occupied number If, if we were to implement the residential exemption, you're allowed to choose a percentage up to 35%. And that, that percentage is a percentage of the residential average value. And that would change, that, that value would be exempted, and that would change the tax rate. So as you see in the middle of this page, we indicate that the tax rate would move from $10.67 to $12.91. And that's, that's before anyone is qualified for the exemption. In other words, the tax bills would go out at, at a rate of $12.91, and then people would apply for the exemption. The break-even point, where you would not see a benefit, but you would not see a decline in taxes, this year is $1,290,995. Any questions on that? Any questions on anything else?
I do want to thank you for taking my query from last year and incorporating that.
Oh, absolutely.
I do appreciate that. And I see that the last three categories, 550 to 552, they're all zero, so they don't have to be separated out. So I appreciated the efficiency in that. So, once again, as the Chair stated, Chairwoman stated, you do not recommend, you present the information, but it's up to the select board to take the vote on setting the tax rate with the factor of whatever we deem appropriate. So I would turn to my, is that correct, Attorney Cunningham?
Yes.
And if we wanted to continue with the status quo, it would be to approve the $10.67 tax rate with a factor of one? Is that cor, if that's what we want to do. So that's a possible motion, but if anyone else would like to make a motion to do something different, or talk about something different, that's fine. But, so I'll turn to my colleagues. Mrs. Morgan?
I just, I had a question on the, on the report. And again, I'm very new to this, so I'm sure this is my ignorance. Is there a place where, so I see on page five, the, the school debt exclusion amounts, obviously that's like ramping up as the high school is finishing. Is there a place to find out where those, like, what percentage of that debt is attributed to which project? I mean, it's mostly the high school, but there are other projects that we're paying debt on.
Yes.
Where would I, I don't need you to give it to me, but if you can tell me where to go find that?
Sure.
I'm very good at Google.
The treasurer has a list of what goes into that 14 million.
Okay, great.
By project.
And then why, again, this is going to be my ignorance, why does that number there not match the number in the long-range plan for exempt debt service?
Because there is other exempted debt. This is particular to schools.
Okay. Because the number, like, so the FY '20s, this could be an old version of the plan, too, but like, so there's, there's more, there's, there's more in this report that you're giving us than we see in the long-range plan?
That's my understanding, but I would defer to the comptroller or the treasurer.
Okay. All right.
And the votes actually are recorded by the clerk, so that would be another resource for that information.
Mr. Feeney?
And what I would say, Ms. Morgan, too, is after the board's potential vote this evening, setting what the levy will be for '26, we will then go back into the long-range plan and reconcile to the numbers voted this evening. Because from '25 to '26, as it exists right now, would have just been an assumption based on the long-range planning model, about how something was going to grow. But that could change based on the amount of excess levy capacity, what would have been voted by this board at a prior meeting for the senior means exemption. But we would also, at that time, take the opportunity to reconcile the school debt. And the one thing that is often, something that we get around this time of year that we reconcile to, is debt that we owe, but the debt we didn't issue a borrowing for, which would be namely the Minuteman School. So we'll get a number from the Minuteman School system, and then we'll reconcile that in, between the long-range plan and the tax rate recapitulation. and the tax rate recapitulation sheet.
Okay, great, thank you.
So, just a follow-up question on that. Do you think, and I'd be shocked if you say yes, that this Friday's long-range planning meeting and the sheet with the calculations we get, will all that be incorporated? Or perhaps that would be the December or January meeting?
No, we would expect to have that incorporated for this week.
Okay, so I'll endeavor to, but if the town manager or the board administrator could remind me after Friday's meeting that we just, as a courtesy, send that to the remaining three members that don't, do not go to long-range planning, because they can't. We would love to all be there. Okay, sorry, I interrupted you, Mrs. Morgan.
No, no, that's fine, thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd, for joining us on setting the tax rate.
Always want to get back to this one.
Yes. And we're discussing whether to set the tax rate to keep it the same instead of as previous years would be a different tax rate at $10.67 with a factor of one, or if we wanted to do something different, which would shift a 5.12 to about a 7.2 on the CIP, the commercial, industrial, so. Is there any other questions or a motion? Mr. DeCoursey?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Mann and Ms. O'Connor and the whole board for joining us again and for the presentation. Just a couple of maybe overall questions or slash comments. You had laid out on page one, the new growth, which is a critical component each year, because we're limited, as, as you said, to 2.5% on the existing property. And that $1,283, by my count, equates to about $120.2, $120.2 million worth of value.
Value.
That's the new value that you found over the past year. And, correct?
That sounds right on the money.
Okay. And just a question, is the new condominiums up on Mass Ave by Broward, is that included? Is there any growth from that, or is that next year?
So, there is some growth.
Okay.
But that building is classified as an apartment building until they go through the conversion process to condominiums, which will trigger our conversion.
They typically hold off recording the condominium documents to the very end because of the change in value.
Sure, and they're getting very close. So, I imagine between now and January 1st, they'll be recording that. So, that, that's actually going to be a nice piece of new growth for fiscal '27.
And you have some significant other new growth now with the MBTA communities and neighborhood communities. There are a number of projects in process that will add to new growth as well.
Okay. And one, not a big number because of the way it's taxed, but I noticed that your chapter land, recreational land, there were three accounts last year, there's only two this year. So, one of them must have come out of the classification, is that right?
That's correct. So, we had, one of our two properties failed to apply this year and have since indicated that they will not be seeking that exemption in the future.
Okay, all right. So, again, perhaps some opportunity. I don't know in the year they do it, if it's considered growth when they get out of the chapter or, or not, is that, do you know?
Yes, so growth from that is in the current growth number.
Okay. And then, I just have one or two more, Madam Chair. I see on page two that there were about 25 abatements. Is that the number that were granted? Or, I'll pry your abatement number.
That is granted.
Yeah, okay, not, not, not applied, okay. And I don't know, and again, we're here tonight to basically select the residential factor, which then ties into the, to the tax rate. But given this number, I don't know how many you have left gets into the long-range plan, too, in terms of overlay, what we're giving you, what's coming back. Well, you won't know until you get applications until, in February. But how many matters, if you had 25 granted, how many are still outstanding?
Well, I'll address that.
Just not, not particular properties, just numbers?
Yeah, there, there are still a number of significant ones. Commercial abatements outstanding. The board has, you know, I've been on the board for almost 25 years. The board has been very conservative when it has come to the overlay and how much we retain in the overlay. I think you're getting to the question of how much more of the overlay could we necessarily release?
Well, I'm going up to the line there.
Okay, no, no, that's okay.
On the question, but I mean, it's an important issue as we enter into a discussion about an override.
Understood. The board did discuss at length the release of a portion of the overlay. We had a lot of spirited discussion about it. One member was, it was not a unanimous vote. One member did not want to release as much as we did vote to release. We are concerned about what's outstanding, and we're concerned about what is going to happen when an override passes. What typically happens is we get a tremendous number of abatement applications whenever there's an override. I would say probably triple or quadruple. So, we're concerned about that. But the board is going to revisit the issue of the overlay and whether there's any more that the board thinks we can safely and conservatively release to the time.
I think that would be appreciated by everybody. Because one thing, as, as you know, Ms. O'Connor, being on the board for, well, it used to be years ago that there was a separate overlay account for each fiscal year. Now, you have one big overlay account.
Right, right.
So, you get a little bit more flexibility that, that way. And if there are issues that come up, maybe flexibility down the road if there are cases. But in the short term, I can say I really appreciate your willingness to revisit that.
Yes, and just to piggyback on that, I do appreciate what you have voted to date. I was hoping for 1.5, 1.3? I think it was a two-to-one vote for 1.1?
Yes.
1.1. And I understand the 3 million that's in there, the 589, the 900,000, et cetera. And I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at it, but you can't commit to anything, obviously. And we're having these same discussions at long-range planning with the schools. At the last meeting, when the Comptroller came in and discussed that there was 2.5 million given back to the budget on only 11,000 from the schools. You know, we're going to continue, myself and my colleagues, to whatever degree we want to, have conversations, yes, on the town side, but also on the school side with growth, growth factor numbers, with hiring freeze, with other things like that. So, knowing that when all of us have to go out for the override next year, we can not only say that, you know, you know, traditionally, oh, we looked everywhere, we squeezed every dollar, every dime. It really helps more if we can also say, we've had this conversation two or three times with different boards, school committee, Board of Assessors, town manager, and for our colleagues on the school committee, they can say all that, plus the superintendent. So, it's not that we're singling the Board of Assessors.
No, and we appreciate and understand that.
Okay, sorry, Mr. DeCoursey, you said two more, and I only let you do one?
No, no, I said one or two more, and that was my one. So, I'm good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It was your million-dollar one. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before I forget, perhaps I'll make a motion?
Mm-hmm.
I do want to follow up on that point, but I'd, and I asked Attorney Cunningham to correct me if I don't get this right, but I moved that we set the tax rate for FY '26 to $10.67 with a residential factor of one?
Thank you, Madam Chair, perfectly, Mr. Helmut.
Thank you very much. And I just want to echo Mr. DeCoursey and Mrs. Mahan's appreciation for, for the reconsideration of that. This is a really good time to shake the couch cushions for, for, for change. And I think because we are going to be going back to the orders to say that we need to do an override in order to keep the services the same, it's really important to, to me as a Select Board member, making that ask for the, for our community to raise its own taxes, that we can demonstrate that we've looked everywhere we can and, and shown within safe and conservative boundaries what we can do. And I, and I agree with Mrs. Mahan that I know that I will be hoping to see that from every corner of our town government. And I have enormous respect for the independents, directly elected members of the Board of Assessors and the work that you do. And by the way, I'm really glad that you called out the staff. Because we are, all of us who serve in elected positions are only as good as the staff that do the groundwork and give us the information over which we make decisions. And I'm, I'm really glad that you didn't go and one of them is here tonight, because the, the town is only as good as the people actually on the ground doing the work. And I know that you know that as a very longtime-serving public official, so thank you for that. Thank you again for your, your consideration on the, on the overlay. And I made my motion, thank you, Madam Chair.
Second.
Mr. Hurd will second. Any further questions or comments? If not, an emotion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd to set the tax rate at $10.67, the residential factor of one. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you so much for joining back-to-back meetings with us.
Thank you.
We're here on December 8th, if you want to come back.
Have a great Thanksgiving. Gobble, gobble, we'll now go to the
Have a nice Thanksgiving.
And thank you, Mr. Suarez, for joining us. We hope you enjoyed it. Consent agenda, small business Saturday proclamation, a request for special one-day beer and wine license, November 22nd, 2025, at the Robbins Memorial Town Hall for the Book Rack event, submitted by the Book Rack, Michael Bujlio. Request special one-day beer and wine license, November 29th, 2025, at the Widdmore Robbins House for a private event, Judy Rakowski. And a request special one-day beer and wine license, December 21st, 27th, 28th, 2025, at 422 Summer Street for an event, submitted by Lauren Corsino. I will just say that the PACS and REC Commission will also be meeting shortly to, this is sort of a two-part approval that's needed, and it doesn't necessarily have to go in any order. And I know what it's like when you're trying to do an event and you have to deal with two, three, four different boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. And you're all volunteers, and you're trying to get things done. So, this is on to at least get the first part of that pie, a cog in the wheel that they need to have done. So, on the consent agenda, is there a motion?
Move approval?
By Mr. Hurd, is there a second?
Second, yes.
By Mrs. Morgan. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor of a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Morgan, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Will now go to licenses and permits for approval, common victual license, Greek habits, 478 Mass Ave, Georgia Nicolakakos. Now, you can come up and say your name correctly, and I apologize for not even coming close. No.
Hello, my name is Georgia Nicolakakos. And I am the new owner of Greek Habits at 478 Mass Ave. The former owner, Theodora Nicolakakos, is my sister. But she wants to focus on her family a little bit more. So, I have 10 years of experience in the restaurant industry, and it made sense for me to continue this little amazing shop for us.
And it is. I've heard many, many people rave about
You've been?
Yes, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, you're doing a great job. Turn to my colleagues for a motion?
Move approval?
By Mr. Hurd to move approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. DeCoursey. I want to thank you for, I want to wish your sister and her family well, but thank you for taking on this extra burden. We're all aware of how many hours you have to put in, in a restaurant endeavor and how difficult that is. And really, the testament to it is the product that you put out. And I'm, I'm not just saying that. I've heard so many people who say they've, you know, have gotten a good meal, lunch, et cetera, at the Greek Habit. So, thank you for continuing this so that it can stay in Arlington.
Thank you, we really appreciate it. We love what we do. It's me and my sisters doing all of this, so we're very excited. We have loved the city of Arlington for the past year and a half that we've been here, and we wanted to continue, so we took the decision to continue with me.
And we're very thankful. So, on a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
We now go
Have a beautiful night.
Thank you. To appointments to the Youth Counseling Center Advisory Board, Mary Kowalszak. Is she with us by Zoom? And again, I apologize if I did not say your name even close, but if you could just say your name correctly for the record and give us a introduction to who you are and what you'd like to do on the advisory board.
You were spot on with the name. My name's Mary Kowalszak. I'm a resident of Arlington. I work at the Cambridge Public Health Department, and I have been working with AYCC for the past year, and this year got voted to be a board member. So, going through the process of becoming a board member for AYCC.
I will now turn to my colleagues. Mr. Helmut?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be glad to move approval. And I'll just note that, given that this is also your, your career and your day job and work, it's, it's a real testament to how much you believe in it, that you're willing to volunteer and serve your, your own community in a way that really supports and uplifts this incredible resource we have in town. And so, welcome aboard, and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you so much, I'm glad for the opportunity. It's an incredible organization that's not replicated anyplace else. So, I'm honored to be a part of such a special place.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmut. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments? I want to thank Mr., Mrs., Ms. Kowalszak for volunteering and giving your time to this. As you said, it's really not replicated by many in, in the state, but it is certainly a vital and important part of the fabric of Arlington. And a lot of the work you do, a lot of us really don't know about, and that's the nature of it. But a lot of, a lot of people do know about the work of the Youth Counseling Center because of the good work of the people who have volunteered on that previously and now currently, that it's something that people do avail themselves of the opportunity. And I know you're going to be fantastic continuing on, but now as an official advisory board member. So, our thanks to you.
Thank you.
On a motion by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further questions and comments, or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you for waiting for us, good to see you.
Thank you so much, thanks for your time.
Thank you. We will now go to open forum. I see our Chairman of TAC is here for something later. I'm assuming he doesn't have anything under open forum. If you are joining us by Zoom and you would like to participate in open forum, if you could raise your Zoom hand now?
Seeing no hands raised, Mrs. Morgan.
Okay, seeing no hands, we will now go to traffic rules and orders. First, we have discussion and vote. Order takings for the Stratton Safe Roots to School Project, which our town manager, previously with Mr. Alessi, and now kind of on his own, has been heralding us through and has brought it to us for a vote here tonight. But I'll leave that to Mr. Feeney to explain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, many of the materials provided to the board for this evening will look very familiar. They're quite similar to what Mr. Alessi had provided to the Select Board for their meeting back in July, when at that time we had discussed some concerns with the value of the appraisals that were associated with what we call the takings that needed to be effectuated to make this project happen. So, did take the opportunity to update some of the dates and figures in Mr. Alessi's prior slideshow, and I thought we could walk through those today as a brief refresher for the board, but also to the benefit of our newest member, who I understand is also, from her prior work, rather familiar with this project itself.
So, you know where it is, Mrs. Morgan?
My kids are in this, in this presentation. We're going to clap for them.
Sorry, Mr. Feeney.
So, the order of taking is the board's formal vote that will authorize the community to move forward with the fee takings, the temporary easements, and the permanent easements associated with the construction activity. So, there was a vote at 2024 Annual Town Meeting that empowered the Select Board to vote on this project and its order of taking. So, approval, again, from this board for any takings is necessary before the legal department could proceed with any recording at the Registry of Deeds. If we were to ultimately vote this this evening, that recording would take place in the week to come, and that would be done in advance of this project being advertised to bid by Mass DOT in December. So, we're on quite a tight timeframe here. So, we're on quite a tight timeframe here. And once recorded, then we'll send a notice of taking, again via certified mail, to all of the impacted property owners who did recently receive yet a different certified mailing regarding the updated just compensation amounts associated with this project. So, by way of background, this is to provide a fully accessible walking route with safe crossings for children and pedestrians that walk to the Stratton School, and it'll incorporate Hemlock Street, Dixon Ave, Mountain Ave, and Wheeler Lane. Will include new and/or repaired sidewalks, curb ramps, curb extensions, new crosswalks. The construction for this project will be funded in its entirety through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, who has also led and funded the design process that has occurred over the last handful of years. The town's sole obligation with respect to this project is what we call the right of way acquisition, which is what we're here to discuss this evening. And we would look to fund that through our Chapter 90 apportionment. Fortunately, for this year, we are going to see what I would call Arlington's record level of Chapter 90 funding, given an infusion from Governor Healy for this particular year. So, it was well timed. Again, this slide has been updated to show where we are today with right of way acquisition being contemplated in November of 2025 for a project that would be advertised for bid in December, and then hopefully break ground next construction season or roughly spring of 2026. So, because we're using federal dollars that are being passed through the Commonwealth, we're required to follow federal right of way acquisition laws, which is what has sort of been the-- what has precipitated the various easements and takings. So, we have to acquire these interests through legal instruments as recorded at the registry, and that must be done and certified by the-- by Mass DOT in advance of the project being bid. So, we can acquire these property rights either by donation by private property owner, which is voluntary. At least one owner to date has offered to, you know, has volunteered to donate their interest, and there could be others moving forward. And then the other mechanism would be through the order of taking, which is the document that the board would vote on this evening that would be recorded, and then we would offer just compensation to the property owner based on a certified appraiser's review of the impacts to the given property. So, this is just an overview of the full project plans. There are 57 total affected properties. There are-- excuse me, I guess the prior slide was not necessarily updated to reflect that it's now 56 total affected properties. Excuse me, the second slide has been updated. With nine total fee takings, 17 permanent easements, and 63 temporary easements, with a description of each of those property interests listed there. It is worth noting that a property may have more than one type of impact, and that most of the impacts are temporary easements, and that is to provide construction crews the necessary clearance to work up to, and including the back of sidewalk, which abuts private property. And then, I think we may have went back a slide. Okay, here we are. So, this is-- was the point of discussion at our July meeting, and this has been updated to demonstrate the progress we've made since that meeting. In July, the total takings, the just compensation associated with total takings was $677,100. As we sit here this evening, the appraised value of the takings is at $457,800. By and large, that was done through an agreement with the Massachusetts Department of Transportation based on a review of the updated construction schedule to reduce the temporary easement duration. It had been five years. It went down to four years, and now sits at three years to better reflect the fact that we would anticipate construction on this project to only take one year. So, that is a large part of the downward departure or driver, but there were also some individual property assessments related to the methodology used for some of the land that was actually part and parcel to a private way. So, the appraisal methodology, once updated to reflect what was possible on that land, it reduced some of those values as well. So, of that 457,800, like I noted, there's one property owner to date who has agreed to donate their property rights, which are valued at just north of $24,000. And then there is five properties that, through sort of comprehensive deed research, it is still unclear who owns them, so notice-- no notice has been sent, but at the same time, if someone were to come forward and stake a claim, we have to be prepared to provide just compensation in that amount if that eventuality came to be. So, ultimately, that is what is before the board this evening for its consideration. We ultimately will not know the final cost until this process fully plays out, because people would have to come forward for those payments or may donate. So, that full dollar value would be determined sometime after this vote and in the coming months. And the final thing I would offer here is, in fact, based on the downward departure of the right of way acquisition costs, this would put the town in a position of contributing roughly a 15% match to the project, whereas generally federally funded projects, it's an 80-20 split. So, based on the downward departure of the acquisition costs, like we're in a favorable position compared to the value we're getting to the project as a whole. So, this evening, what we would be looking for the board to do is approve and sign what we call the order of taking document to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. In the board's material, there is a, what I would call the near final version of that document. There are a few potential housekeeping updates as the project team works through verifying that no property has changed hands very recently and that there is, you know, a name or a book or page reference that needs to be updated. So, and there's also a-- it's expected that a finalized set of right of way plans will be approved by Mass DOT. So, in the version of the order of taking document that the board would sign subsequent to this meeting, we would make any changes to a date or other reference that needs to be done in prior to the board's execution of that document. Also included in the meeting materials are a draft notice of taking document, which would be for future execution following the actual taking as recorded at the registry. And then finally, to authorize myself in my role as town manager to accept the just compensation documents, especially in the form of the certificate of donation document that a resident could sign to relinquish their property rights to the town in lieu of receiving just compensation. And here you can just see an example of what the notice would look like when it's set up for a mail merge to proceed. That's the second page. And here's an example of the order of taking document, which has most of the dates updated, but we would, again, make any final housekeeping changes or edits based on the final plans as presented. And then finally, I would acknowledge-- do we have a representative from Mass DOT with us this evening? I just want to both acknowledge her presence, but also thank Rosemary Scrivens from Mass DOT's Right of Way Group for her ongoing and continued support of myself and the town in our endeavors to get this project across the finish line. Rosemary's been instrumental in providing support to date, especially in John's absence and in the absence of the transportation planner generally. So, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge her presence, but also thank her for her continued support.
And I just have a question. I don't know if you want to promote Rosemary as a panelist so she can speak, but the three actions, the approval of the order of taking, the notice of taking, and the certificate of donation, can we do that in all one vote? Or does it need to be two or three separate votes? Attorney Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be three votes.
Would be three votes, okay. And then my second question would be the actual signing by members of the board. I know until it's filed, recorded, and comes back to us. And considering the timeline that we have, is that something that when our signatures are needed, we could get like a two day, three day window of when we would have to come in and sign it? Do you think that would be possible? Or is that something, once we get it, you want to back out in 24 hours?
I could take that. I would think that we'll be in a position, once we have the finalized document, to provide a day or two to have each member come down and provide a wet signature on the document.
Attorney Cunningham?
And as soon as that's done, Madam Chair, the legal department will get that filed with the registry.
Okay, cool. So, two days, we'll probably do it, but we'll-- it'll probably be-- could be in November, but could be in December. That's why I sent you that question about how recordings at the Registry of Deed we're doing, because I hear different things, but I'll leave that to you all. So, Mr. Hurd?
Just a quick-- so, the $457,000 number, does that include the $24,000 that has been given back by one property owner?
The $457,000 was the total appraised value, so that would be--
Okay.
--reduced by any donations or folks that fail to claim their just compensation.
Right. So, I would just like to say, because I'm not congratulating myself, but to the members of this board who, when this came up a few months ago, who kind of questioned, you know, what the figures were, and, you know, sometimes we get presentations, and we just accept the work that comes before us. I think, you know, members of this board pushed back and saved the town a couple hundred thousand dollars when we really needed it. So, certainly, some acknowledgement should be given for that, in addition to all the work that everyone's done.
That's a very good segue into Representative from Mass DOT, Rosemary. I'm blanking on your last name if you-- first of all, the town manager extended his thanks in what my colleague, Mr. Hurd, just referenced. A lot of that was working with you. I know you won't solely take the credit, but I'd like to give it to you in terms of the five year to the four year, and the four year to the three year, and also filling in for Mr. Alessi. So, if you want-- if you could unmute yourself and--
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, great. Hi, thank you. So, it's Rosemary Scrivens. And yes, you know, Jim has been wonderful to work with too, because, you know, this kind of process is time consuming. There's, as he well knows, there's a lot of tasks involved, and it's kind of a above and beyond kind of function that towns don't necessarily plan for to go through this whole right of way process. And with his busy schedule and all of his responsibilities, I've been very impressed about how he has-- you've really focused on it, and it dug in and got to the bottom of a lot of things, because it-- even though it is sort of something you could almost call an unfunded mandate, because you have to deal with it, it's-- if you-- if it's ignored, it can cost the town more money. And you guys have certainly done your due diligence in working through the evaluations with the appraising firm. And, you know, Pam Markey, who is the administrator of the Community Compliance Right of Way Division, really is the one that kind of made the decisions on the-- being able to reduce the length of the temporary easements. And that's not always an easy decision, because the last thing we want to happen is that you go through this whole lengthy process with the appraising and the offers and all of that, and then some unforeseen things happen with the project, and it goes longer than you expect, and the temporary easements expire, and then you kind of have to go through the process again. So, that's why, you know, Mastot has learned from past situations, and it's a headache for everyone involved. So, they created a five year temporary easement minimum. But, you know, they kind of-- with your urging, they looked-- she looked through it with the-- some other folks in our project management area, and, you know, felt comfortable enough to be able to, you know, okay to go to the three year point, which is pretty unusual. So, you know, it's been very good working with the town. I've been very impressed. So, and, you know, the right of way plan, as the town manager just indicated, is-- you know, there was a new submission, and so there will-- we do still have to-- we've sent out some comments today to the designer. So, we are waiting to resolve a couple of items. So, you're not going to want to record this yet until, you know, the-- this most recent right of way plan has been approved by Mastot.
Okay, thank you. See, it pays to have Mr. Hurd question everything and make us look at us two or three times. And we do appreciate the town manager and Mastot working to carry out and make this project a little more amenable. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, no, I want to thank Ms. Scrivens for the work that you did, Ms. Markey, because I was involved in at least one meeting with you, and we had a spirited but very productive discussion. And I think, Mr. Feeny and I-- you had a position on the number of years, but you persuaded us for three years, but we appreciated the flexibility in when we actually do the takings, because that had a lot to do with the timeframe. So, I want to thank you for that, and also thank Mr. Feeny for the detailed work he did with the appraiser. When we did find some discrepancies, he made sure that those values were adjusted and followed up on behalf of the town. And I think, as Mr. Hurd said, as a result, we can all feel that we did our job in reducing the cost of this and spent the town's money wisely.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you certainly have worked through this in a really diligent and detailed way. You know, the select board, and John Alessi was fantastic. And then Jim really hasn't missed a beat with all his responsibilities to make sure that he, you know, dotted the i's and crossed the t's.
Thank you. So, I guess first, if there's a motion to approve and sign the order of taking document by--
So, moved, and could I just take it up? Here's a comment as well. Thank you. Yeah, no, I also want to express my appreciation to all of Ms. Scrivens. And but since Mr. Hurd did mention the role of the board, I feel like some credit is due to my colleague, Mr. De Corsi, because in addition to really effectively making the case for the timeframe, I recall that he also spotted some of the appraisal deficiencies or opportunities, I should say. And I know did a lot of work on that, so I appreciate that. And very much to the staff, and I appreciate Ms. Scrivens mentioning both the outstanding work by our town manager and by the former employee, Mr. Alessi, and who I am reminded put together this project. And it's extraordinarily complicated piece of work that will benefit Arlington's schoolchildren in that region for many decades to come. So, I'm grateful for that. And once again, I said earlier in the meeting that we, as elected officials, are only as good as the staff that back us up. I think this is a really good example of that good outcome and a good partnership where the board did do its job, its due diligence, and spotted some additional important opportunities to save the funds. So, I'm really proud of the teamwork that this represents.
Thank you. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I can't believe that we're here. I have emails about this project from back in like 2017. So, it's very exciting that we're at a place where we're ready to move forward, and there are a lot of people that put an extraordinary amount of effort and expertise into sort of each step along the way. So, I'm glad. And there's been a lot of discussion. This is my walking route to school. I walked this route for 12, 13-- for like 12 or 13 years, like a long time. So, this is my route. It was Joe Curro's route before me. And so, there's been a lot of conversation in the neighborhood and in the community about this project for probably since 2017, 2018. So, it's exciting that we're, you know, continuing to move forward dutifully and thoughtfully and carefully. It turns out sidewalks are really hard to do. And it's great that the town thought-- because really what happened with this project was that as soon as the Dallin Safe Roots School project ended, the town said, where are we going to go next? What's the next project, right? And that's the amount-- like, it's now 2025. So, that's the amount of foresight. So, that's the amount of foresight and movement it takes to sort of immediately move to the next, to the next project. So, I am really happy that we're here. So, thank you to everybody.
Is that a second?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan.
I do very much second this one.
Any further questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve the order of taking by Mr. Helmut, seconded by Mrs. Morgan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, now take a motion to approve the notice of taking document.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments? If not, a motion to approve by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. And the third vote to authorize the town manager to accept compensation donations. Move approval by...
So moved.
Mr. Hurd, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Helmut. Any questions or comments? If not, motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. And we continue to move on, and thank you again to Mastot, Ms. Scrivens, for also joining us again. It is appreciated.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Good to see you. We'll now go to Agenda Item 11, Discussion and Vote: Temporary Relocation of Bus Stop at 19200 Mass Ave. Patrick Young, Bandar Development, the board, also including Mr. Hurd. Some had some questions on this at the last meeting, so we have it here tonight. I don't know if Mr. Feeney, I know we, I believe Mr. Hurd also asked if the temporary loca, if you want to speak to that.
I mean, I just, we suggested all the locations and tried to get the MBTA's input on it. I don't know if we were able to do that.
Sure. So, I think Ms. Mar is able to pull up the presentation that was in the materials for this evening. You know, very grateful. I see we have Mr. Young from Bandar Development and John Murphy from the development team on behalf of the private project being considered, but we do have in the board's materials this evening, a brief presentation, or basically slideshow, that MBTA was able to put together at my request on short notice for the different options that the board had, that had either been contemplated previously or had been raised by the board for further consideration. And the T, again, very grateful to the folks I was able to connect with directly over there that worked through the different options for further consideration this evening. I believe there are three options. Option one, moves, temporarily relocates the bus stop to in front of the Leader Business Banking area. The impacts are shown on an overhead image on the next slide that basically demonstrate there would be five parking spots impacted, but that's basically using the start of the 180 block of Mass Ave for the entry, bus stop, and exit of the bus from that location. So, that was option one for consideration. Option, and this is just showing some Google Street View images about where the signs might be and what the parameters of the bus stop might be. Option two is essentially using what I'd call the second half of that same block. So, moving the entry to the stop down closer to 180 Mass Ave Suite 101. Here, there would be impacts to four parking spots. There's an overhead image shown next about what is depicted in terms of the second half of that block moving eastbound, and then that's followed by a few on-the-ground images of where the MBTA would relocate the bus stop signs to. So, both of those potential options for the 180 block were acceptable to MBTA operations for the board to consider this evening. And then option three was the option that Mr. Hurd had raised about, given that this was a temporary relocation, could we co-locate the bus stop in the right-hand-turn-only lane? This would be of the three options contained in this slideshow this evening, as well as the option presented, you know, last week, more closer towards Cabeza or Derby Farm. This is the only option that would not have parking impacts. So, what I would say is, there is the space necessary to make this work. The only thing that, if this were the board's preferred concept here in front of auto/the Capitol, given that it needs like a final review by MBTA operations, because there's some deviations from the existing bus stop guidelines that may in fact be acceptable, because this is being done on a temporary basis, but that would take a final review by another individual, which could be performed in a timely manner. But, you know, it's just sort of, I would say, we're only 80 or 90% of the way there with this option, but it is open for the board to consider. And I would just ask, if this happened to be the board's primary or preferred alternative this evening, that we also consider what the next alternative or a backup option could be, if this was ultimately deemed not to be feasible by the T, based on their final review. But it passed sort of initial muster, and the only other thing I would add here, there's some, you know, slides showing the overhead impact, but I don't think it's necessarily shown, or it's going to be tough to see in the second, the last on-the-ground image, actually, that in fact, the signage there now does actually say right-hand turn only, but there is a placard below that sign that says, "Accept Bus," because as this board voted back, and I believe, 2018 or 2019, it was to allow the MBTA to use that right-hand turn lane as a cue jump, so that it could enter the right-hand turn-only lane, not have to turn right, but proceed through the intersection when transit signal prioritization was added to that signal head, to more quickly move the bus to the far side of the intersection for that stop. So, knowing that the bus stop used to be in that location, and that, you know, technically right now, that is a legal maneuver, that's what left this option open for consideration. So, with that, I think that's sort of a long lead-up to say, I think there are a number of different options the board could consider for the temporary relocation of this bus stop as driven by the need for, you know, the demolition and reconstruction of a new building on the adjacent corner.
Okay, does Mr. Young or Mr. Murphy have any brief comments they'd like to? I know we discussed this at the last meeting, but we did add a third option. Is there anything you would like to add to what you've already said?
This is John Murphy. I thank you for the time tonight. I don't believe so. We can, in terms of signage relocation and any other steps MBTA and town like us to take, any of those options would work, from my point of view.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
So, I just want to make sure I'm hearing this right, and Attorney Cunningham can confirm this. Can we take a motion to approve one location subject to approval by the MBTA? And if they don't approve it, approve the second location?
Attorney Cunningham?
Madam Chair, yes. The board can take that type of motion.
I mean, again, to me, I think the option that doesn't remove parking is the best, and, you know, I think it's just a good location to drop, to have the bus stop. Of the two other options, I always like a pull-in bus stop, because I think the buses can kind of flatten to the curb a little easier than one on the end of a block always seems to cause the bus to be kitty-cornered if there's parking in those spaces. So... I mean, I, my preference would be to, and I'm happy to make a motion and see if it gets seconded, but would be to move option three as the board's preference that doesn't remove any parking. And in the event that the MBTA does not approve it, then move option one. And just a note to, you know, it's a high, parking is at a premium in this area, but, you know, the 180 block does have parking behind it. So, the businesses that are there, that's, those are all condominiums. They have access, and their clients have access to the parking in the back, so, you know, if anyone, if anyone's going to lose parking, then I certainly understand that. But, you know, those parking spaces are also a public commodity for all the businesses in the area. My preference would be to do option three, where there's no parking loss. And one thing I was kind of thinking about after is, I mean, there's nothing stopping, like, obviously, they need to make, we need to move that bus stop for them to start work. But if all of a sudden it creates chaos, this can come back to us, and we can move it to option two, right? So, you know, if, where that's the case, I would, yeah, that would be my motion.
Attorney Cunningham?
Yes, maybe just for the public. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, Mr. Hurd's motion, as I understand it, is to vote for option three, subject to approval by MBTA operations. It would be the option chosen by the board. If the MBTA operations did not approve it, it would automatically go to option number one.
Correct.
And that's to temporarily move?
To temporarily move it. Do we have to set a time certain, or would this just come back to the board for relocation of the bus stop after?
It could just, Madam Chair, I think, it could just be temporary, and then the board could review it later if it deemed that the amount of time had gone on too long. The board would maintain jurisdiction over the issue. It's not a permanent move. It's a temporary move that could be considered by the board at a future meeting, depending on when it deemed appropriate.
Right. So, do you need a specific time in the motion?
No.
Okay.
We would just say to Mr. Young and Mr. Murphy, I know construction projects are not to compare it with a kitchen rehab redo, but I know you're projecting eight months, so I would ask perhaps if at the six or seven month, you could touch base with this board with an email to either say it's on track for the eighth month, estimation, and if not, if you could also let us know that, and the then-chair and town manager could decide whether an email will suffice of how much longer than eight months it will be, or if it needs to be an agenda item again, if that's okay. If that's agreeable.
No problem.
Awesome. Okay, is there a second?
Be happy to second the motion that I think we'll hear after, be known as the Hurd Plan bus stop. With appreciation to my colleagues for that creative solution. I hope that it works.
Yep.
I apologize, I was somewhat distracted, because I'm going between my two different, my town email and my Verizon email, and I can't find it. And I don't know if this is like a bad soap opera and I dreamed it, but I have a memory of receiving an email from an Arlington resident. I want to say it's a woman who, can you, there was, I just wanted to bring, since we have Mr. Young and Mr. Murphy here, if you could, Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. I was actually, thank you for reminding, because I was going to bring that up as well. Yeah, a resident wrote into the board. It's a separate matter, but very much a related matter, and this might be something for the town manager to follow up with, perhaps with consultation with the developers. But they noted that the temporary fencing along Lake Street and Chandler frontages makes it impossible to use the Lake Street sidewalk with a stroller or a wheelchair, and the resident very kindly sent a picture to that, saying it was in place for a few weeks, and just asked the board or the town and the developers to see if that situation could be corrected. Does that fairly summarize your...
Yes. Is that something, Mr. Feeney? Mr. Feeney?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, something as the board considers its vote this evening is ultimately that once we get feedback finalized from the MBTA, that whatever the final outcome is, is that it's going to require of the development team that they submit a new construction or a revised construction management plan to accommodate the changes that were discussed this evening. But in that plan is where they will also outline the steps they're going to take to ensure safe and accessible pathways around the construction site, and that may take the form of using Jersey barriers to create temporary sidewalks and crossings. So, I will note that I did take the opportunity to make the team here this evening aware of that correspondence, so that it could be addressed in a revised construction management plan that will outline the details necessary to ensure pedestrians have safe passage.
So, you're saying Ms. Young and Murphy, and/or Murphy, have seen it?
Indeed.
Okay.
Well, luckily, we're about to have a fleet of Jersey barriers available.
That's right. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Murphy and Mr. Young, are we good to go so far?
Yeah, that's great. Just one follow-up question. Should we be reaching out to someone specific at the MBTA to follow up with their final decision-making process, or will someone on the town's end notify them and put that in process?
Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, I would expect that I would notify the MBTA, first thing tomorrow, of the board's decision this evening, and they've indicated to me that they would expect to be able to begin that review immediately on Wednesday, when they reopen for business. So, I expect we'll have some finality to this matter before the end of the week.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, on a motion by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mr. Helmut, to temporarily relocate the bus stop to option three, or if not approved through the, by the MBTA, option one. Any further questions or comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. We now go to Discussion and Vote: Two On-Street Parking Spaces, Short-Term Parking or Loading Spaces at 1025 Mass Avenue, close to our Highland Headquarters Fire Station. Do we have Mr. Maggiore getting promoted? Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm promoting him to panelist as we speak.
Am I correct, the request for these two on-street parking spaces will be at the end of the project, or will it be immediately upon our approval, if we approve? Is...
Thank you, Madam Chair. My expectation, especially given that construction activity remains ongoing, and they have, you know, still drop-offs and construction-related items in front of the building, I would expect this to be the new permanent condition post-occupancy, as requested as an item of their special, excuse me, special apartment.
Thank you. Mr. Maggiore, I apologize if I didn't say your name correctly. If you just could say your name for the record.
No, you're great. It's Matthew Maggiore. I am the developer, owner, and manager of 1025 Mass Ave LLC, business address at 13 Wheeling Avenue in Woburn, Mass. Appreciate you folks taking the time to hear us tonight, and as you're aware, we're developing the 50-unit project at 1025 Mass Ave under the Arlington Comprehensive Permit Program, and per one of the conditions of our comp permit, we're here this evening to request approval for two on-street short-term parking spaces to be used, obviously, in the permanent state of the building, once it's turned over to the residents, which we're targeting for early January.
Yay!
I have copied the plan. I don't know if everyone has that, but I could certainly pull that up if you'd like.
We do have the PDF of the Mass Ave plan in front of 1025 that you submitted, as well as your... I'll turn it over to my colleagues. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll move approval, and I just want to say to Mr. Maggiore, from everything I've heard, that the construction is first-class, and things have gone really well, so congratulations on that, and looking forward to that being completed soon.
Thank you very much. We're working hard to deliver a beautiful building to the town, and everyone's been great to work with on our end, you know, between the building department, planning, community development, ZBA. It's been a pleasure all around, so we're looking forward to getting to the finish line and delivering an amazing product to the town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd? Questions, comments? If not, a motion to approve the two on-street parking spaces, short-term parking or loading spaces at 1025 Mass Ave, made by Mr. De Corsi, seconded by Mr. Hurd. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maggiore. Have a good one.
Same to you. Have a great evening.
We will now go to our ever-patient Chairman of the Transportation Advisory Committee for the next two agenda items, Mr. Stube.
Actually, Scott Smith should be online on Zoom. He's going to talk to us because he was on the team that did the Arlington Center Safety Zone. But I'm here to support however I can. I'm Joe Stube.
I'll be promoting him to panelist now.
And which one would you like to take first?
The Arlington Center Safety Zone.
I think this one will be a little more detailed, but we'll see.
We may have a little more discussion about this. There's no right answer on that western end, so it's, it's hard. We went back and forth in TAC multiple times as well.
Well, my estimate of everything, I put 25 minutes for this and five for the next. Not that that should hold, but that will tell you my thinking. Sounds like you all did the same thing at the Transportation Advisory Committee, which I want to thank Mrs. Morgan for agreeing to fill the remainder of Mr. Diggins' term as our representative. And I believe your next meeting is December. As soon as Mr. Smith is fully promoted and can unmute, we'll turn it over to him for the discussion on the Arlington Center Safety Zone. I see you.
So, you want to do Arlington Center now?
Yes, please. We get to go first.
Okay, are you running the slides?
Yeah, I promoted you to panelist if you'd like to share a screen. If not, I can, I can do that for you.
Oh, I can, I can do it. Okay. Can you see slides?
Yes, we can.
All right. Scott Smith of the Transportation Advisory Committee. And here proposing the safety zone along Mass Ave and Arlington Center, extending roughly from the high school to the main fire station. To provide a bit of context for this is, as you know, the statutory speed limit town-wide is now 25 miles per hour. And we're working with DPW and the town manager to put up reminder signs that you may have seen on Summer Street and Broadway and Park Ave. For that 25 mile an hour speed limit that already exists. So, to provide some context is that, you know, when we're done here, we, we expect all of Mass Ave to be either signed as 25 or as a 20 mile an hour safety zone. So, moving along there. So, reasoning is, um, you know, a lot of, you know, it's a lot of crashes, 18 involving pedestrians or bicyclists. Area going from the high school down through the commercial part of Arlington Center, lots of businesses. You have the library, you have town hall, you have the, you have the high school, two daycare centers, a bunch of MBTA bus routes in the area, which means pedestrians. So, lots of vulnerable user attractions and user-vehicle conflicts. This area has also a number of fairly long, unprotect, uncontrolled crosswalks, ranging from the area by the high school down to Water Street, with several others with traffic lights on them. It's also the part of Mass Ave that really has no explicit bike accommodation, where bicyclists are expected to use the general-purpose lane. So, plenty of user-vehicle conflicts. And it meets the requirement of minimum one-quarter of a mile. This is a little over three-quarters of a mile long, what we're proposing. Oops. Anyway, before I talk about signage, did want to mention, we had a lot of discussion about the western boundary. One, one option was making the safety zone much shorter and doing a separate school zone by the high school. But then, as pointed out, hey, there's a lot of activities at the high school outside of school hours. So, in that end, that persuaded us to bring the safety zone out to the high school. And then Len Diggins was part of TAC for this discussion. He'd meant, he was looking for extending it a few more blocks out to Grove Street, but the rest of the committee wasn't quite there, you know. You know, understood why, but you have to stop somewhere. And so, a lot of discussion, the eastern extent was pretty simple. It's a pretty clear beginning of that center's business district. But on the western side, we had a lot of discussion and ended up basically ending it by the high school. So, the signage plan, we're looking at basically putting the 20 mile an hour signs evenly over the zone. And typically, you want to do it, have one after a major intersection, like just after people might be turning right or left from Route 60 into the zone. For the plan going eastbound, and at the very end, you have the end-speed zone where it refers to the default 25 miles an hour. Going westbound, somewhat similar. You know, have the sign just west of the big intersection in Arlington Center. And then several reminder signs, looking at placing the reminder signs before we have, you know, just before several of the uncontrolled crosswalks that are a concern for pedestrian safety. And did that both eastbound and westbound. Yeah, so, our request is, select board approve the establishment of a safety zone along Massachusetts Avenue about beginning near the Mass Ave-Lockland Avenue intersection by the high school and ending at, near the fire station at Mass Ave and Franklin Street. So, I'll pause there for any questions or comments.
I will note, especially where we're located, right here at town hall. We've had two or three town employees that have been hit and struck in the crosswalk. We had a gentleman, elderly gentleman, recently, I believe, back in April or May, who lived on Mill Street, who was coming here for an event and was also struck in a crosswalk. And unfortunately, I believe he passed away. So, I think there certainly is the need for these signs. And I noticed in Lexington, Lexington Center, they've done the same thing, which I always think it's, you know, we have Arlington that we've gone down to the, pre-this, if we vote it, the 25 mile per hour. And then you get into Lexington and there are signs that say 35 miles per hour around Wilson's Farm, Mass Ave. But then, once you hit right before Lexington Center, they go down to 20 mile per hour. And especially in a major main thoroughfare where these proposed. And I understand Mr. Diggins questioning about extending, but I also agree that, you know, we need to start somewhere. And, you know, we can always revisit in the future. But I'm getting ahead of myself because I'm not going to be the one making the vote. So, I will turn to my colleagues. Mr. Hurd?
Thank you. So, as I looked at, and, you know, I think we've talked about this before. I don't want to really jump into TAC. TAC does a lot of work on these and does a lot of consideration. And I actually thought the western edge was pretty clear. And I was looking at the eastern edge, and I think Mr. Smith kind of brought up a point that I didn't think of, is that I guess people are taking a right off of Franklin Street, and that could be where it's good signage. Was there any consideration, because I guess the end of the zone is sort of right in the middle of, you know, a stretch of roadway, which is kind of a main stretch of roadway. It's like, what's different about this portion over here versus this portion over here? But, you know, I know there's some queuing at the light there on Mass Ave, right at Franklin, right, there's a store there. Was there any consideration of having it in there where people are stopped at the light and they see the signs?
I think the intent is for it to be about 50 feet, 50 feet east of that traffic light.
No, I know. I can see it on there. I'm just saying, was there any consideration of having? So, is there any benefit to having it start at a traffic light where there's queuing, where people could sit and see the signs? Or is the idea, as Mr. Smith said, that you're taking a right onto the street? And, you know, as you're moving, you see the sign? I guess what I'm asking is, is there ever consideration, whether it's better that it starts where people queue or where they're in motion?
We went, TAC went through the discussion with the 25 mile an hour signs at length about where to place them. And there was a long discussion about whether they should be at traffic lights or once people have actually progressed through the intersection, so they're not looking for pedestrians, not looking for cars, turning right on red, anything else. There's a lot of things to be looking at when you're at the light. You're not always stopped and observing. This discussion ended, then, you know, put it a little further down. So, they're now, you know, on their way and the sign stands right in their face. So, we kept that same philosophy within this environment as well.
And I'm happy to move approval of what's being suggested to us. I just had that question.
Although, I still worry about signs getting lost. Jim, we still have that one 30 mile an hour sign. It's a straight 30, thickly settled sign that's still from 40 years ago in front of one of the buildings on Mass Ave. We'll get that taken down when we, when we get these new ones put in.
Well, it is funny. In past discussions, I think we had it about the safety zone that went up towards the east of Arlington, about confusion about the town-wide. And when I drive my son to, to hockey in Bedford, right across the line, it says town-wide 25, speed limit like 20. I'm like, what, what's the speed limit here? But not much you can do about that.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Hurd. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, thank you. This is, you, you, it'll be really obvious in December that transportation is not my area of expertise. But I am going to out myself now. My question is, is from your professional, sort of, what happens? What behavior happens when these end-of-safety, end-speed-zone signs get put up? Like, what do people, like, what's the behavior that drivers, that you see, that you expect?
The expectation, which Scott had mentioned, is fairly shortly after that, we're going to have a thickly settled 25 sign, somewhere not very far after the end-of-speed, end-speed-zone sign. So, the expectation would be that you're back at the town, town-wide 25 mile an hour speed limit.
Right, which isn't significantly higher than 20, right? I mean, I, I think what, I'm, I'm just thinking to myself, what message? Like, I know exactly, like, I, I live right there, right? And I have, I have high school students, two of which drive. And I'm, I'm thinking about what, like, is, what message does that sign send to those kids and people coming?
The end-of-zone sign, other than it's required by Mastot, I'm not sure.
Right, okay.
We wouldn't just put up a 25 mile an hour sign and not, skip the other sign personally. But that's my, my thought. But that's not what Mastot says. They actually require an end-of-speed zone at just like they have end-of-school-zone signs. It's, it's totally, because initially, those were so much lower than the local speed limit. I think they wanted to make sure it was clear to people that they could go back to whatever the ambient speed was on the road before they hit the special zone.
Right. And, and we, the expectation is that people would adjust their speed, sort of, quickly at that point.
And you haven't been part of the ongoing discussion, as we have with Mr. Alessi many times in TAC and in the board many times. The signs are a first step in a calming effort. It's a layered approach. You know, the more things we layer in there, the more our rapid flashing reflective beacons and anything else we do from a traffic calming point of view in these stretches within the 20 mile an hour zones, the more likely people are going to be to actually pay attention to that speed limit. And then also, once they're out of it, if there is still traffic calming going on, then that's also going to make a big difference in the long run. This is a step on the road, hopefully, to a better place in the long run.
Yeah, no, agreed. And I'm, I'm glad that it includes that area in front of the high school. It is, it is very congested. It is very complicated with the additional light that's there just for pedestrian crossing. That is very confusing, frankly, to people. Like, I mean, they, I, I am never sure that they're actually going to stop at that light. So, I think, I, I am grateful that, that it extended. And, and I think your point is well-made, that, that that building should be used at all times of the day by the community. It is a community resource and should be widely available. So, making sure that the, the traffic is being managed appropriately for, you know, full-time use. I think I appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
Is that second?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, second on, I don't know who.
Mr. Hurd's motion.
Mr. Hurd's excellent motion.
And Mr. Smith, is there anything you want to add? Or would you like to just second or agree? I just want to turn it back to you.
Oh, thank you. No, I think, yeah, I think you pretty much, between you and Jim, you pretty much said what needs to be said. So, unless you have more questions, I'm good.
Mr. Helmut?
Thank you. And this will be more evidence that traffic is not my specialty either. But were there any speed studies that informed this? And is that even an appropriate criterion for, for safety zone?
So, we didn't put those words in these decks, but as you may or may not remember, the first time we came with the safety zone, we went with the philosophy that Cambridge and Somerville used, which is, in theory, Mastot says you're supposed to do it, Cambridge and Somerville don't do it. Arlington's following the same philosophy. I personally hold the philosophy that says, why do I want to do it before we're changing the speed limit? We're mandating a speed limit. We're not using a speed study to say. We can use it afterwards, like at Buzzell Field, to decide whether people are still going 35 or 40, you know, in one direction or not. I mean, I think the signs have helped from my observation there, but I haven't sat there with the radar gun for too long. I did a little bit of it. It was better than it usually was. But I think having speed studies done somewhere along the way, we're going to need to do that to help inform our traffic calming philosophy and say, we really need to go do something here. You know, that's that next step in my mind that I think is perfectly valid. But going in, we're declaring that it's going to be a safety zone that we chose not to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, it's good enough for Cambridge and Somerville. They do a good job with these issues, and I think that's, that's fine for me. I do, I'm glad that you said that, though, that data collection is really useful and really important. And I think as the town continues to be responsive to the feedback that we're hearing regularly from residents for, for street safety and general improvements, it would be good to know what we're doing. And I'll say this too, that I'm very happy to support this. And I think it's, it makes a lot of sense. Certainly, the justification is there. I note that this does make a lot of Mass Ave, you know, a safety zone. And I.
We're just about half now, right?
Yeah, you know, and so, I, I don't know, and there's no real good answer to this, but I'll just, you know, I don't know where we cross the line where it becomes less special because of its ubiquity. And I know we had some of this discussion with the last safety zone we did, you know, of that. And, and, you know, driver attention, drivers can only sort of handle so much complexity and so much. So, you know, this, this will make it very busy. I think it is absolutely worth doing. I like the idea of planning as we can, Mr. Manager, to, you know, to, to do some data collection to see what's really happening, particularly as we change in and out of these zones so that we can inform what we're doing and inform other layers of, of the safety. Because, you know, like, I, a part of me, back in, back in my mind, just kind of wonders, you know, if, if everything's a safety zone, is anything going to, is, is, are we going to actually see modulation of speeds or not? And, you know, I don't know.
Sure. A little bit of perspective. So, between the safety zone in the heights and the one in the center, there's a mile.
Yeah, that's helpful.
So, it's not close. And then from the one in the center going to east Arlington, it's a half a mile. The one at the end before the Cambridge border is only a quarter mile. But it, so that's the one where you might lose it.
Yeah, that's.
But that, those are long enough stretches where you no longer think you're, you know, safety zone after safety zone.
Good. Yeah.
I agree. That's a concern.
Yeah, no, you know, thanks. That's, that's a helpful discussion. And I, I, I know that a tricorder had his hands ready during one of my comments, and I'm sure you might want to check him out.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to add to, in response to Mr. Helmut's question about speed studies, I appreciate that there are different viewpoints about whether that's required. I know that Cambridge and Somerville don't utilize them in advance of establishing safety zones. But I would say that the chapter that enables this board to establish safety zones, Chapter 90, Section 18B, does not explicitly require those studies be conducted.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Just add one more thing. But I like these two. It's a lot of talk about speed because that's what it is. But I think it also, when you have a sign that's a safety zone, it makes, puts people on notice that, you know, maybe you're in an area where you're not familiar with, and there's more instances of. And so, I think, you know, the one thing is speed, but it could be something that just grabs a driver's attention and just says, oh, God, you know, I got to be alert here. I have to make sure I'm not on my phone. There are things that they shouldn't be doing anyways. But I think that is an added layer beyond speed of just attentiveness when someone sees that they're going into a safety zone.
And you hit on, if you, if you remember or not, the Seattle study where they put the signs up every two-tenths of a mile or 1,000 feet. You know, if you've driven on gray streets, since they put the signs up, you're hit in the face with a 25 mile an hour sign every time you look up. sign every time you look up. There's 15 signs on Gray Street. So, and those are all 25s, but, you know, we really, you, you know what the speed limit is, you're not guessing anymore, so, to your point, right? And the Seattle data was very compelling about what kind of effect they had from doing that, so.
I must say, yes.
Hopefully we'll see similar things when we really go out and look.
I have found much less cars riding my back bumper when I take Gray Street, um, and I feel a little more brave to go 25 or even 23. Um, sorry, uh, Mr. Hurd, were you? Um, any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Hurd, seconded by Mrs. Morgan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote. We now go to discussion and vote Irving Street Safety Zone.
So one, one last thing, sort of as a, just FYI, uh, the 25s that we're going to recommend on Mass Ave, we're not quite ready to bring tonight, but I fully intend to bring them to TAC and then bring them back here. I don't think we need approval, approval to put them up, but I wanted to complete the process and say, you know, this is what we've done, we've done this many miles in town, this is the signs we put up and all of that. So I'll, I'll plan to bring that back properly, and I may not make it before the end of the year, maybe early next year, because we don't have a TAC meeting till December. That's just an aside, sorry, just to set expectations. So moving to the second safety zone, we're, we're changing gears here, you know, Scott kindly gave us the commercial safety zone, which is the highest visibility with the most active users, the most cars, the most pedestrian, most accidents. This is a quiet, sleepy little place on Irving Street where we have a park that's in an area where you've got people using the street as a cut-through. You know, bottom line is, you've got a lot of vulnerable users walking up and down that street, you've got a lot of people shooting from, from Jason Street down to Pleasant Street to get to the light to take a right onto Pleasant and move on their merry way, so there's a lot of traffic there. If you remember, one, also one of the subgroups or the working groups for TAC was to go around all of the parks in town. I think we came to you all a while back and said, we're going to go look at all of them. This is a relatively, it's probably not one of the ones we would love to solve first. I think we want to solve the school issue with the fields next door, but that's a much thornier kind of question of what, what do you do with the safety zone and the school zone and how they overlap. We haven't found the right people to talk to at Mastott yet to, to resolve that. That would address five different places in town, so. So this one basically is a stretch of Irving Street from Jason Street down to Pleasant Street. It's just about a quarter of a mile. You've got the Parmentor Playground there and the children's, uh, children's area down there as well, the children's center. If you want to slide two, so that section is narrow, it's well-used, it's curvy, it's hilly. You know, you go from a two-way section from Academy Street up to Jason and a one-way section going down. There's a lot of pedestrians, I mean, I use that street as a cut-through, I'm guilty as well, and there, there's a lot of people always on the sidewalks or going across, across the streets and using that area, so. There have not been a lot of accidents, but it's been a couple and more, they're more on the ends of the roads than in the middle. But it is one of the places where, as we talked about way back when, we really want our parks to be safe areas, and this seemed like an easy target to pick and say, hey, you know, we've got a quarter of a mile, this is a straightforward stretch, let's just make it a safety zone and be done with it. We've got a lot of other parks in town that are like a tenth of a mile that become more problematic because it's so short, it's hard to have a safety zone there. It's probably 15 or 20 parks that fall into that categorization. So that's mostly that. We have pictures of where, we have three signs there, we have one at the top when you turn on from Jason, one halfway down, uh, just below Academy, and then another one going back up just above Academy, because we have people coming on to the street from Academy don't necessarily know that it's a safety zone they're driving into the middle of, so we figured that we needed to put one there, and then an end safety zone on either end. There's pretty good signage spots, clear space for the signage and all that. So TAC's requesting that we approve the establishment of the safety zone on Irving Street, approximately 30 feet east of Jason and ending about 30 feet west of Pleasant.
Mrs. Decorse?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I'll move approval. Thank you, Mrs. W. I, I think this section of Irving too, there's a lot of people late for meetings in this building or late for work who come flying down Irving and, and, or whether it's a town meeting too, at, um, in, in, in the evening for that matter. So I think it, it makes a lot of sense just to really try to slow things down there.
Present company accepted, of course.
Of course, of course.
Were you the one who was on my bumper? No, okay. Mr. Hurd?
I'll second the motion. I was actually going to say, this part of Irving is so tight, it, it's hard to actually get to over 20 miles an hour, but certainly happy to support it.
I think people seem to be more, more worried about the upper part as you're coming to that area where everybody's concentrated, when there's a little more room and you can go a little bit faster.
Yeah.
Okay, um, any further questions or comments? If not, on a motion to approve by Mr. Decorse, seconded by Mr. Hurd, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous vote.
And in the unintended traffic calming, have you driven over the, the speed hump on Jason Street?
Boy, that was going to be my new business, to see if we could paint a yellow for.
Jim could talk to it better, but I think the people putting in the, the curb ramps did an oops and made them too high, so they put tar across Jason Street. It's, it's about that high. Wow, we have our first raised crosswalk, who knew? It's awesome.
Thank you, everybody. I had about five feet the first time.
Um, we'll now go to new business, Ms. Marr.
No new business, thank you, Mrs. Mahon.
Town Council Attorney Cunningham.
No new business, thank you, Madam Chair.
Our town manager, Mr. Feeney.
No new business, thank you.
Mr. Decorse?
No new business.
Um, Mrs. Morgan?
No, no, thank you. No new business.
Mr. Hurd?
I actually was going to mention that, because I drove by it all the time, but I think that was something we could have dealt with offline. I don't know how long that's supposed to be there, but that is, seemed to, what, what I would say, pretty dangerous.
And Mr. Helmut?
No new business.
And, uh, my new business, Colonel McGovern with the Brine family, Mr. Helmut, was there this morning for the dedication in the light to moderate rain, and the town manager was there, Attorney Cunningham was there, our deputy town manager, Mrs. Bonjorno, Chief Kelly, Chief Flaherty, and, uh, employees of the Department of Public Works and Dan Warren got a special shout-out. Um, and I don't know Dan's position, is it supervisor of public works?
He's the operations manager.
Operations manager. Um, and I'm sure I'm going to leave people out, but there was quite a large crowd. Mr. DiCaprio was there, a former colleague, Mr. Frank Hurd was there, a lot of classmates of, of.
Jack.
Oh, Jack Hurd was there.
Francis Florida State.
Yes, oh, I was going to get to him, wait, no. Um, and one of the things when we were sitting there, and it was great, the speeches were from Colonel McGovern and Derek Christopher Brine, um, who is the nephew of Private First Class Brine, and also David, Davy, Dave Brine, um, Private First Class Brine's brother. Um, and quite a few classmates, and it was nice to hear, um, that they highlighted again, Mr. Decorse, the year before speech that, um, Private First Class Chris Brine wrote, um, about Memorial Day, um, saying how they should be honored and some of them have dreams they don't get to see to fruition and a year later. And that's when it was pointed out, it, a very sad fact, um, that, uh, Private First Class Brine also passed away, um, the same day in 1966 as our former colleague, Jack Hurd's brother, David Williams, I'm blanking on his rank and I apologize on that, so, and, and Mr. Our current colleague's uncle. Um, and so it was nice to see everybody there, but I really did appreciate, it was funny when they were talking about the family and, um, uh, PFC Brine's brother Dave was saying, oh, and I remember, uh, everybody and all his friends, and they all had a nickname, and he started saying the nickname, and it was like Doug's and Wugs and Mugs and Doug's, and then he goes, and Loggy, or something, everybody rhyming except for the last guy, so. And then the only other thing is, I had a conversation with Mr. Diggins this morning, um, who wanted me to just let everybody on the board know on behalf of himself and our town clerk, Julie Brazil, um, if the board, if board members individually or if we collectively have any, um, suggestions, requests regarding any question or questions, um, on the census, um, for which we took the early vote to set the local election, to pass those on, um, he's saying before Thanksgiving. I mentioned this briefly to the town manager, I think earlier today, I can't even get my day straight, um, to follow up with town council. Sometimes census questions in a, in a survey aren't so much to ask the question, but to also use it as a tool for education, and since we had, um, we have had override discussions, but we've also had discussions on deferred taxes for seniors, the discussion we had here tonight, Clause 41D that we passed in 2017 for seniors originally could take up to 500 off a year, now it's 1,300. So, um, before I ask my colleagues what their census, what their sense would be, is if we could, if it was legally okay, um, to include whatever the three to five options are for Arlington seniors on their taxes, if we could include that as part of, if we have the opportunity, um, as part of a census question, more, to ask the question, but more under the guise to educate. Uh, you know, a question would be, you know, are you aware, um, if you're age 70 or older as an Arlington resident of, uh, Chapter 5, Section 41D that allows you to take up to 1,300, yes or no? Are you aware that, you know, 70 older, um, if you, you and/or your spouse, or however it should be worded, wanted to defer taxes under whatever? So I just wanted to, for people to start thinking if there's anything that we would like to see on the census, um, maybe, um, if it is something that we can include those options for, you know, senior tax relief, or maybe it's something else. And then, um, if you could just contact Mr. Diggins and/or our town clerk, Ms. Brazil with that, um, and then, once I, you know, by the end of the week, confer with the town manager and town council, if I get a go-ahead on that, I'll ask town council to forward an email of what those three to five options would be, just so everyone else can look at it. So, um, with that, I have no more new business, so take a motion to adjourn by?
To move.
Mr. Hurd, seconded by?
Second.
Mrs. Morgan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned, and we will not see each other in person, except for tomorrow, women marching Friday night when we go to the firefighters' retirement party, but every, the next date will be December 8th. Thank you.